declarations of interest in accordance with the Waverley Code of Conduct. Do members have any non pecuniary or disclosable pecuniary interests to declare?
I've received one before the meeting, Chairman. councillor Round has a non pecuniary interest in item 10 because his wife is chairman of the Haysmere Museum and he'll be leaving the chamber during any discussion on that particular grant. Thank you.
So councillor Round, when it comes to the discussion on, we'll take that as a first item on the agenda and if you kind of please leave the room and then we'll continue with the rest of the discussion later on. Questions from members of the public? Have we any questions received from members of the public?
Number seven, Chair.
Right, proceeding on then to item number five. The committee forward programme on page seven. This is the committee work programme which has been drawn up following the committee's decision previous meetings and takes account of items identified on the latest executive forward programme as due to come forward for decision. Members, you are invited to identify any additional items from the executive forward programme that the committee may wish to add to the programme. Are there any questions on that programme? councillor Els.
Can we make sure that the wider Brightwell's issue is brought forward to the agenda in March?
The what? Sorry, the what?
The Brightwell's issue.
Do you think members agree?
Are members happy that we should bring their Brightwell's forward to the March agreement?
Agree.
Yes, excellent, that will go forward, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other items that people feel they ought to take forward? So if you're content to note the committee work programme, I will proceed on to the next item which is item number six, which is policing in our neighbourhood and I would like to welcome inspector Mark Bridge from Surrey Police to the meeting and he will be giving a presentation. If you would just press the little button on your microphone.
Thank you, Chairman. I would normally stand but clearly I need the microphone. My name is Mark Bridge and I'm the Waverley Neighbourhood Inspector, so warm welcome to the meeting this evening. I'm asked to talk about some of the imminent changes that are taking place within Surrey Police come the 3rd of April. My role is a simple one, I manage a team of people, police staff here at Waverley, that's at Godalming and Farnham Fire Station. So if I start with some of the slides, I've got about six or seven slides, I'll quickly go through them, there's a bit of information in there but I'll quickly go through them and then that'll open up for any questions that you may have for me. Thank you. So pin which is policing in your neighbourhood is simply about Surrey Police looking at demand. Surrey Police, like all organisations, is under austerity cuts and funding difficulties and so our role is to look at the way we've policed for the last 14 years. The model we have at the moment isn't as effective as we would like, so clearly we need to make some changes. It isn't all about austerity, it's about Surrey Police looking at the way that we work, being more efficient with the resources that we've got. But in simple terms, you know, we've made savings of 26 million the last four years and we need to continue to make more savings. Demand is going up and we need to make efforts to manage that demand. The question is about where the demand is and there's some stats there, 675,000 contacts with the public each year and we formally record a higher proportion than our other peers, police otherwhere. We also actively investigate a higher proportion of recorded crimes compared to other forces. Where is our demand? Some of our greatest demand is focused on hospitals and we have a significant number in Surrey. Also missing people, we had over 3,600 reports last year of missing people, repeated absences from children's homes and vulnerable people suffering from mental health issues. So that's some of the demand that we currently have. Crime is also changing. Unfortunately, the past three years has been an increase in reports of rape, sexual offences and domestic violence. A large part of this relates to sort of historical offences which we're recording. I guess on the positive side, people are coming forward more now, feel more comfortable to come forward to police to report matters and that we can investigate, but there has been an increase. On a positive side, I can say here in Waverley, domestic burglaries have gone down, they continue to go down. I looked at the figures before I came out this evening and for January, we've only had three burglaries in the whole of Waverley. You're clearly aware that it's a huge area, 125,000 people, clearly three is still too many for us, but it's really good that only three burglaries. I think I just want to cover a couple of points which is our priorities haven't changed in that we're still, it's relentless pursuit of criminals in Waverley and Surrey. It's all about us keeping people safe and it's being there when you need us to be. So that's what we're concentrating on. In addition to that, we're looking at child sexual exploitation. It's a really important area of business at the moment. We're keen to find the abusers of young children and also to work with the abused to make sure that the victims are dealt with appropriately and that's a priority for us. In terms of pin itself, the priorities for us are that there will be changes in our contact centre, that's where we take our initial calls. It's really important that we supplement staff in there, so there'll be specialist staff in the contact centre who will be better at triaging calls. So Surrey Police deal with the matters that we should be dealing with, but also that we signpost to other agencies where it's appropriate. So that's going to be a big improvement and hopefully reduce demand. In addition to that, I currently have a staff of 34, mixed staff, police officers and police community support officers here in Waverley. Come the changes on the 3rd of April, I'll have near 70 staff. I think there are worries in the public arena about neighbour policing, people are worried that their local policeman is being taken away from them. Quite understand that, but the reality is different. Come the 3rd of April, I'll have 50, what will be called area patrol teams, they will be neighbourd officers. I think if I could just try and explain it, the current process that we have and the model that we've used, we've streamlined policemen as soon as they've joined us, so we kind of have three areas of expertise. We have frontline officers that deal with the fast time bits and pieces, they would go to 999 calls, arrest people and they're very good at it. They would then sort of hand over to people that are very good at interviewing people and investigation, put crimes together, so that's the second specialist unit. Apologies, I'm addressing over here because of the microphone. So that's the second group of people that are specialists. The third group are neighbourd officers which are here, they're sort of omnichompetent, they're good at arresting and they do a whole range of bits and pieces, but they also prioritise on long-term problem solving, working with partners. In the new model that we have, we can't, it doesn't work anymore well enough, so what will happen is those 50 officers that will join me on the 3rd of April will be omnichompetent, they'll be expected to arrest somebody, they'll be expected to interview that person and they'll be expected to put a court file together and attend court. So for Mr Harris and myself here, that's nothing new, we've been around probably far too long, so but that's how we worked initially. There are advantages in streamlining, but we can't continue. So the new method, I have no fears or worries about it, we just have to upskill some officers so that they're capable of dealing with things from the start to the end. In addition to those 50 police officers, I'll have 10 PCSOs, they'll remain here, working in Farnham or on the Borough. So there'll still be that neighbourd contact for local people. In addition to PCSOs, you'll have an admin assistant here who will support the work that I do and I'll have a number of sergeants that will support all the work on the Borough. I think that's probably enough for me in terms of the pin, I'd like to just open up to you as local councillors and residents, just to any thoughts and any worries you may have and I'll try and answer as best I can.
Right, thank you, Inspector. If I can start off by just asking you, could you tell me, tell us exactly how many officers are going to be looking after Waverley? You, how many sergeants, how many policemen, etcetera?
Well, I hope the good news is that you'll still have an inspector here which is myself. There will be 50 area patrol team officers, there will be 10 police community support officers and there will be seven sergeants. Two of those sergeants will be between here and Farnham and they will concentrate their efforts on long-term problem solving and there'll be five other sergeants that will look after the 50 APT officers, so just under, short of 70 people working on Waverley Borough. I would just add to that, Chair, if I could, I spent sort of 26 years policing, a great deal of my time has been in neighbourd policing and I'm very passionate still today about making sure we still keep in contact with the local community, so that won't change.
Thank you very much. I think 70 policemen looking after 150,000 people perhaps is a little scarce, but nevertheless, if you think you can do the job, then good luck to you. Are there any other questions? councillor.
Thank you, Chairman. Inspector, you say on the 3rd of April, that's a given point in time and suddenly you go from 34 staff to 70 staff. Now, that seems an incredible leap to me and indeed, are they coming at one fell swoop? And indeed, where are they coming from? Straight out of training, have they got any experience coming into, you know, Surrey? Excuse me, Surrey?
The question is a good one. What we've done is we've taken away from some other areas, for instance, our investigation department, we've taken some people from there and put them into the area patrol teams. The CID, Criminal Investigation Department, will be smaller, but they will concentrate their efforts... Do I need to use the microphone? I do. Okay, thank you. So the criminal investigation department will be smaller, but they will be concentrating their efforts on serious crime. So that means we can take some people out to support the work that we're doing and that will be one of the changes. Yes, there'll be new officers coming in that need to be trained up and that's happening, it is a progressive thing. Over the last few, well, many months, we've been training officers up to make sure they're omnichompetent, so that they do know how to start a job, how to finish it, so we've been planning for this date. So I'm happy and confident that come 3rd of April, we'll have the staff. It'll be constant training, of course, but yes, we'll have the numbers.
Thank you, councillor, Mrs Els.
Thank you and thank you for your presentation. I'd like to ask you, if I may, about the role of the PCSO. I have to say, I'm not wishing to be parochial in any way, but I come from Cranley and our PCSO is very much, is very effective, particularly with the young people and also gives confidence to the elderly people within the village. And I think this has strongly contributed towards the reduction of crime in the area, in the Cranley area and I suppose, I read quite regularly, that the role of the PCSO is under threat and I would like to see, if anything, it increased. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Els, I understand completely what you're saying. PCSOs have a very important role to play in terms of reassurance, supporting local people and dealing with local problems, so I agree entirely. There will be a reduction in PCSOs, that's what we have to do, but their role will change slightly, they'll still be very important in the community, dealing with reassurance and dealing with problem solving, but we'll use them in a different way. So they're still here, we still have the numbers, we'll have 10 for Waverley, Cranley I will make sure is looked after, you do have a very good PCSO there and that will continue, so I hope we can continue that work.
Thank you, Inspector. councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Chairman. Can we just have a look at the previous slide where we had the percentage figures, please? Okay, that's fine. Sexual offences and domestic violence is a very considerable worry. Now, are there any reasons or any, think you can put that down to for that massive increase? Because I know you have a lot of problems with, within the force, sometimes, I don't know how to put this actually, but perhaps you could answer that question?
Yes, it is a worry and I quite understand it, it is a national trend, doesn't make it any better or any easier for us, but it is a national trend. Part of it is to do with recording of incidents, part of it is to do with the historical offences in terms of when people come to us now and they report a crime, if they then say to us what, six years ago or six months ago, something happened, all those incidents are now being reported. So yes, there is an increase, there's a significant increase, which is why we've bolstered the department that deals with sexual offences and those sorts of domestic abuse type issues is being bolstered. It's clearly a risk area for Surrey Police and that's why some of our staffing have been increased in that area. So I don't know if there's anything you want, would you want to say anything on that at all? No?
Can I come back on that? Is there any individual thing that's changed during the last few years which has triggered this? Anything you can think of that, you know, suddenly we're going, we're getting these problems of this nature? Something must have triggered it, whether it was, I mean, I don't know.
I think it's the two things I've mentioned, the recording process that has been in place and partly is the historical offences that we're now dealing with.
Hello, I'm Rob Paris, I'm the Chief Inspector for Operations West Surrey. I think there is also a countrywide and within Surrey, a very, a major shift in people's views and opinions that generates increased reporting. So people can't tolerate it, increasing victims or survivors of domestic abuse don't tolerate it, so they increasingly seek support. Now, that can be as very simply as dialing 999 and the police attending and dealing with whatever we find out, but it's also down very much to the voluntary and other support services who offer, you know, exactly that, great support, great service, but what also happens is that we work very closely together. So if people disclose criminal offences that have happened within an intimate relationship to one of our partner agencies, they may not want the police involved, however, the police get told and we still have to record it as the crime because we are the single agency for recording such offences. So it is very much a mixed view. There, you know, we can't be as blunt as to say the offences are increasing and I'm sure we can all reflect on incidents that have happened in Waverley and across the country for many years that indicate, it has been ever present, but every organisation's ability and willingness to deal with it has increased. So you will continue to see increases on the back of that and for the large part, we're very positive about it. As I say, the crimes themselves can't be tolerated, but if more people are coming to help, to ask for help, then we have a greater opportunity as a multi-agency approach to intervene and stop what could ultimately be a domestic homicide.
Thank you, councillor, Mrs Els.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Five years ago, nearly five years ago now, when I first became a councillor, I thought it would be a really good idea to make contact with what we had then, which was a beat bobby. I don't know that you call them that, but that's certainly what the villagers call them, a beat bobby and a PCSO. And I made contact with them and they both came round for a cup of coffee with me and it was good stuff because we developed a relationship whereby, you know, I said, "Any problems that you think I ought to be aware of, let me know and I'll do the same." That beat bobby left and even though I tried to make contact, nobody came back to me. So I gave up in the end and just got on with my job. But what I'd like to say is, could you make it a part of whoever's job is patrolling, you know, the various wards, to make contact with members? Would that be a useful thing to do? Certainly, I think would be useful for me, from my point of view, because then you would get the local aspect of things, especially as we're not going to have dedicated beat bobbies in each village anymore, I presume.
I just missed who the contact's with, so contact with...
Well, the contact was with, then, we had a beat bobby and a PCSO and they both came round.
With you as a local member?
With me as a local member, yes, sorry.
It's a time to interrupt, but could you address your remarks to the microphone so everybody can hear?
So my question was, who is it the police officer needs to check in with? Is it the councillors or local residents?
Oh no, not to check in with me, to make contact with me, not on every aspect, but just generally speaking, so that there is a relationship existing there between local members and between the police, so that if I am aware of a particular problem, I can contact the policeman or PCSO myself.
Clearly, it's very important the local policing team has contact with local councillors and local people. In the changes that are coming, there will be 50 area patrol officers, they will all be aligned to Waverley Borough, so within a short space of time, in fact, a number of them already know Waverley well, but in a short space of time, they'll have that local knowledge. But to answer your question directly, yes, at this moment in time, you have a number of neighbourd officers who are dedicated to areas, that number will be less, but you'll have two neighbourd officers that will have regular contact and will be dealing with ongoing local problems. But, and of course, the PCSOs are still in place and that contact will continue, we will support their work, we will make sure that you have the contact so that you can get hold of us when you need to and I see neighbour policing continuing much the same as it did.
What I'm saying is it didn't, that's what I'm saying. To begin with, it did and then it, when we had a change of personnel, it didn't happen and I didn't, couldn't have any contact because nobody ever got back to me, that's what I'm saying. Could it become part of the ethos of the new staffing setup that council members are part of the process, if you like, in relation to local work? Do you see what I'm saying? I'm not sure I'm, perhaps not putting it very well.
Yes, I can see what you're saying, so looking back, there have been changes to the numbers of police constables assigned to specific areas. Under the new model, there are still going to be officers who can be your points of contact and community support officers. What we need to ensure though is that managing a massive increase in demand for higher risk areas is that that contact and that relationship brings value to the policing and community safety process. So alongside other mechanisms, it is being reviewed. So yes, if you have issues from your community that you wish to discuss, as I say, the points of contact are there, so I don't know why you haven't been able to get in contact or had no response to your contact, so I apologise for that. That shouldn't have happened because, you know, as it is at the moment, there is a team downstairs who pick up those duties. As I say, they're slightly less in number, but the very specific neighbourhood officers and team who can be your point of contact will then be bolstered by a specific Waverley area policing team, the 50 the Markers alluded to, who will be supporting them with the direct police work, so they're responding to crime, antisocial behaviour and disorder and taking ownership of that, being the direct contact with victims of crime or witnesses of crime, so they will, they will keep that ownership, they won't hand it to another department and so with the additional training that they're getting, they will then take that through, hopefully to the outcome where you can bring an offender to justice or remedy the problem. So yes, there is the mechanism, it is still there, so something's fallen down for you in this particular case, but there will still be the mechanism for a point of contact. And a huge amount of our contact is via phone or via web links and that will all be updated with, with the new structure and the new points of contact, because, you know, they will change and there is some movement of staff. Does that help?
Chairman.
Thank you. Could you just switch your microphone off when you finish speaking and then it doesn't interfere? I think you wanted to come in on this.
Just on that point and really just to build on what we've just heard, I think what's a really key point, I think councillor Els, you were trying to get across, is that in, in assisting the police to be as effective as possible on the ground, I think you were saying is you're recommending that they make early contact with the borough, ward, borough councillors, because they are an amazing resource in terms of knowing what's happening out there, to put them in touch with other people and to be a conduit for communication. And so I think what we're keen to see is that your staff are given a message that when they're out on the ground, they seek out the ward councillors and they seek to establish that relationship because it will be very productive for them.
Right, councillor Brian Els.
Thank you, Chairman, and good evening, Inspector. Thank you for a very interesting and I'd like to think reassuring presentation. The lady on my right here has explained that we highly value our local PCSO and it's starting to be parochial, but I guess I have one simple question, is it going to be in Cranley or in Godalming? Thank you.
The PCSOs and the team will be based here at Godalming and then they'll be straight out onto the areas tackling the local problems, so their base will be here and of course we have Farnham Fire Station, but they'll be straight out into the areas, helping you and helping the local area.
Thank you, councillor Round.
Thank you, Chairman. I wonder if I could make two points, one being very relevant to what you've just said. Could you just say where the location is in Haysmere?
There'll be, the base station is here, it depends who we're talking about, the area patrol team will start at Gelford, so that's the 50 officers, that's where they'll start their briefing and they will come straight out onto their areas which is Waverley. The neighbourd officers, that's two of them, will be based here at Godalming and the PCSOs, their starting point is here, but they will be, as I say, straight out onto their areas as they do now.
Right. Thank you. The question I was, I put my hand up to ask was to do on this slide as well when you say the crime is moving from the public space to the private space and you mention the internet. There's an increasing amount of internet crime and many of us get duped into revealing stuff we shouldn't and get money robbed from our bank accounts. I've had it, I was savvy enough not to get taken in, but friends of mine were not, and you hear of awful cases on the radio where pensioners have been duped out of a lot of money. Now, okay, people, if they're idiots, they stand liable to be taken in like that, but it's still a crime and the crime is awful, often conducted from overseas, which I agree makes it difficult to catch, but how do you go about this? Do you have a separate section that specialises, because it's quite complicated, some of that, in internet crime? Or was it a national thing?
Yeah, do a bit of both. To answer your question, we have a number of operations, Operation Signature is one that Surrey Police use and we focus our efforts on trying to help vulnerable or, as you say, the people that have been highlighted for fraud, so we have a number of operations that target those areas. We also have the Action Fraud Line. In terms of the investigation, so would you want to add anything around the investigation or...
Yes, well, clearly criminals are still criminals, however... Yes, well, clearly criminals are still criminals, however, very much increasingly using the technology that's available to tackle that crime. So we're doing exactly the same to tackle those criminals, and have increased the training to ensure that even on a response policing team basis, we have a knowledge where we can go into those kind of situations and preserve evidence and take the initial investigation forward. We do have specialist high-tech crime units. Naturally, because they're specialists, very highly trained, they will take the top level of cases. Let's say, Marks highlighted the preventative action, we'll try and do in highlighting potential victims, or those that have been victims, and getting in there early to help them and stop it further. So there's a middle ground where we have to assess the possibilities of identifying that offender. So with the massive volume of crime that is happening, that has to be rationalised out, and we have to make a risk-based assessment, so what is the risk on the victim here? Can we take that investigation forward? In a lot of cases, yes, we can. In an equally lot of cases, we can't. There are big limitations to dealing with foreign nations, and, you know, it means that all of this crime is, can now be committed worldwide. It's not just Billy coming across the county border in his Ford Fiesta and doing it. So we've got the capabilities there, the volumes of it are enormous. So in theory, every, I recently had my credit card cloned, I was able to identify it fairly quickly, because I hadn't bought very weird products from an internet-based in Ireland. However, each one of those transactions is a recordable offence. So, you know, I was the victim of ten crimes on that occasion. The volumes are huge, we can't tackle all of them, that is why we need to, based on risk, so we tackle and investigate those ones where there are opportunities to identify the suspect and bring them to justice, or where there are vulnerable people involved who need enhanced protection. So, and what is often the case, and we fully accept that, is that people will advise their banks, and not necessarily advise the police service. So the picture is likely to be larger than it is now. And of course, you know, you can't blame someone if the bank gives the money back, and their endeth the hassle, then that's up to them. But we do encourage people to report it. The added complexity to it is that those kinds of interactions are fraud-related, and the recording body for those is an organisation called Action Fraud, who are operated in conjunction with the City of London Police. It's very useful, because we get a national picture of fraud, and it's broken down into four spaces, so we can see, you know, how much we're targeted in Surrey for those kind of frauds, and they will also connect different frauds from around the country, because if you've been targeted in Godleming, it's very likely that the same offenders, wherever they are in the world, have targeted hundreds, if not more, other people. So connecting that together is actually done on a national basis. But what it does do is perhaps cause a complexity for members of the public when they call up and report that this has happened, and they get directed to Action Fraud, but unfortunately, the recording nature of it is out of our control, that's governed by the Home Office, but what they do do is liaise very closely with us and pass certain cases back once they've been risk-assessed for the same basis. So it's, you know, it is a massive issue across the country, and you try and tackle it through prevention and also some complex investigation. It costs a lot of money as well.
Thank you, councillor Nusia.
Hi. It's good to hear there'll be more police officers on the road. Are they going to start end of this year, or what is the time scheduled for it?
Yeah, but the timeframe is the third of April, so we're training officers now, third of April is the start date, and they'll be ready to go, third of April this year.
Good. What about volunteer service? Are you looking into that? People who would like to volunteer and things like that, and have people without pay and walking on the street, like Farnham, Godleming and those high streets? Are you looking into that, or are you promoting that?
Yes, we are. Volunteers are really important to us, so it is being promoted, and we are looking for volunteers for certain roles. I'll come back to that in a second, if I may, and we're also supporting, and, you know, neighbourhood watch is really important. I went to the PCC Crime Summit yesterday, where we're looking for a volunteer to run Waverley Neighbourhood Watch, and Community Speed Watch, all those volunteer organisations will continue to promote. They're as important today as they were yesterday, in fact, even more important. The volunteers are just...
Just from a force perspective, we've actually recruited a new volunteers coordinator and manager to invigorate it. So certain areas of it are under review, but the key areas are to reinvigorate special constables, who actually have the swarm powers of a normal officer, and from our experience in neighbourhood policing, are an invaluable support to the full-time officer. But those roles for volunteers, members who want to get involved, can be out on the streets to, you know, crime prevention, support for victims or other groups, assisting the officers that are based here, but also internally as well. So we're utilising volunteers with specialist skills to, you know, try and help out, bolster our own. And that's actually been in conjunction with the volunteers coordinator for the Olympic Committee. So we've used his resources over the last year and his superb knowledge for that. It's a little bit of a work in progress, but very much...
I think that what you could work with the local councillors and advertise more for it, then you'll have more volunteers regarding that, and you'll have more people on the streets. So if you could work with the councillors and Mr Chairman as well regarding that, and advertise more in the borough, I think you won't be running short of people on the streets like the feds and stuff which happen to cover them as well, while walking on the main street.
Yes, I'll just say, the key bit is that it again adds value to policing and making sure people are safe. So we're still, we're not going to be employing or using the skills of volunteers for any activities that don't support that aim. However, absolutely, so as and when we get the information, we're more than happy to share it with you.
Thank you.
Right, thank you. Time is moving on, so we must get on with this debate. Councillor Edwards, you have one more question.
Yeah, a quick one for you. The shift change over office, this is a parochial thing, in Chotamill, where you currently, I think you changed shifts there or something, is it? Can you tell me when you were vacating that area? And also, I'd like to come back on the relationship between the local police and members. We have a good relationship in Chotamill, I must recommend those officers, they're very forthcoming, and pass on my thanks to them, would you? Thank you.
Thank you, I'll certainly pass it on to the officers. I didn't quite understand the first part of the question, so I'll come...
You currently rent office space in Chotamill at the locality, the ex-locality office, and I wondered whether, when you're closing that down, because, and I know you... The reason I want to know is whether I can get somebody else in there, that's the only thing. Okay, thanks.
Yes, I understand. Well, we have no plans at this stage to close it, we're going to continue using it, and that will be the answer at this time.
Right, if there are no more questions, I'd like to thank you both for coming here this evening and for giving up your time, and thank you very much, and we look forward to working with you for the next four years, or, well, forever, really.
Likewise, thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Right, now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the delivery of affordable homes, and I'd like to welcome Jane Abraham, who I'm sure you all know, who is Head of Strategic Housing and Livery, who will be giving you a presentation. Thank you, Jane.
Thank you very much. The reason for bringing this at this point is, obviously, there are lots of changes coming with affordable housing, but it's still absolutely essential, and I wanted to just start... Oh, 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 right, now. Okay, I'm sorting that. About why affordable housing is so important, and in particular, you know, for us, we've got fifteen hundred people on our housing register in need of social rented housing, and recent survey we've done of employers have said that housing is a key issue for them in being able to recruit staff, so absolutely essential that we carry on providing affordable housing. And obviously, recently, there've been quite a number of applications that have gone through with significant amounts of affordable housing, so that's really good. A brief, there are lots of slides here, but I'm going to be much quicker than you might think. A lot of this information is for background and for you to take away with you. So affordable housing is defined in the MPPF, it's divided into rented accommodation, which is social rent. Oh, I'm not even pressing my buttons, oh. Right, and I should be able to multitask. So social housing, that's, all of our council housing is social housing, is social rented housing. Housing association stock is also predominantly social rented. However, from 2011 to 2015, any new grant-funded schemes had to be affordable rent, so that's eighty, up to eighty percent of local market rent. You'll note that actually, the next round of funding from the Housing Corporation, they've been very clear, or the Homes and Communities Agency, they're saying that any new grant and any recycled grant will have to be used for home ownership options, so there won't be any affordable rent through the grant programme any longer, we'll have to find other ways of doing that, whether it's through private subsidy, or whether it's working with housing associations who aren't development partners, or who are running a programme outside their HCA programme. And in addition, the other point to make is, from April, there'll be a reduction in rents for all social tenants, whether they're housing association tenants or council tenants. Next slide. Intermediate housing, as defined currently in the MPPF, is split into shared ownership, shared equity and intermediate rent. I think we're going to see a lot more shared ownership and shared equity in the future, but obviously, that does meet a proportion of our need, and currently, we prioritise people with a local connection to Waverley for shared ownership properties, and will continue to do so. So the key challenges facing affordable housing, primarily around lack of supply, both in the market and affordable sectors for rented accommodation. Challenges in particular are around the difficulties in granting planning permission due to local and national planning constraints, availability of sang, national designations like the green belt, and also the need for us to respond to changing profile of need resulting from the demographics, our aging population, different household compositions, increase in smaller households, and welfare reform, the underoccupation charge. Again, they're all, they're all having a knock-on effect on the types of accommodation, the types of housing that we need. I'll cover the other two parts, the next points on the next slide, around the changes being introduced by the Housing and Planning Bill, and that covers the next two points as well. Obviously, the key issues around the likely increase in homelessness, or people threatened with homelessness and affordability, and it means we've got to be much, much more creative in the sorts of things that we might come up with. Obviously, as a local authority, we're still developing on our council-owned land, we're working with our housing association partners to maximise the opportunities that we possibly can to deliver, to increase supply, and we're making good use of our stock through our introductory and flexible tenancies, and we just need to do a lot more of those kinds of things to make sure that we maximise what we've got. The Housing and Planning Bill, which is just going through Parliament, is going to introduce an extension to the right-to-buy for housing association tenants, and this is likely to reduce the availability of housing association stock to let. So that's going to have an impact on reducing the amount of rented accommodation available, as will be the requirement to sell high-value properties, or pay the levy, which will probably be the alternative. That may save high-value properties, but we're still going to have to find the funding to pay the levy. And when pay-to-stay comes in, in April 2017, when tenants on a wage currently of thirty thousand pounds, which actually is just about the living wage, will have an increase in their rent-to-market rents, that potentially could lead to more right-to-buy, so again, more properties coming out of the stock. The Housing and Planning Bill also introduced starter homes, which are properties available on the open market at twenty percent discount, has a limitation in Waverley, given that the twenty percent discount on a property that's already two hundred and fifty thousand pounds is still outside the average eight, the earnings of average, you know, work-based earners, so that's an issue for us, and the impact of the benefit cap. But again, the key point about the benefit cap is that families who are working more than sixteen hours or more will not be affected by the housing element of the benefit cap, so that's really important to know, and I think that's a key message that we need to keep reinforcing. There's a consultation currently to change the definition of affordable housing in the MPPF, and that will include starter homes, which again, I've said, has a limitation to us, and will take out the requirement for affordable homes to be available in perpetuity, or for the subsidy to be recycled. So again, another hit in terms of us not having that affordable stock that we can carry on using again and again. Next slide. So in terms of for, currently within the planning process, if we have a scheme of ten units or more, we seek a tenure split of seventy percent social or affordable rent and thirty percent intermediate housing. Through 106s with private subsidy, we would still be trying to seek a mix that provided more rented than it did home ownership options, but we know that that's going to be a real struggle to deliver, especially with the current changes and the, obviously, the government's preference for home ownership. And this is the kind of mix that we look for on afford, in terms of the affordable housing dwelling sizes, because ninety percent of people on our housing register have a need for smaller accommodation. That's just a list of the things we always ask for when we're commenting on any applications that come in with affordable housing, with a tenure split, we ask for a particular mix and type, we want affordable housing distributed across the site in small clusters, we want affordable housing built to this code level three or its equivalent, because obviously that's, we're moving away from the codes at the moment. We want affordable housing to be indistinguishable from market housing, and we want schemes to be in sustainable locations, access to transport, education, health, employment, and creating mixed and balanced communities. So those are the key things that we seek when we talk to developments about sites. And then the other thing, which I did think was useful to mention today, was around rural exception housing, and rural exception housing is built in locations adjacent to settlements where normally market housing wouldn't be allowed, but there's an identified need, unmet need. Section 106s restricts the occupancy, so that they're available for people with a local connection to a particular area. Currently, rented houses are excluded from right-to-buy, and English Rural, I think I've said in a previous presentation, have declared that they are continuing to exclude them from right-to-buy, but obviously, housing associations are under pressure with a government agenda to start to, not to exclude them for right-to-buy, so whether our other partners who aren't solely in the business of delivering rural exception housing will be able to continue, that remains to be seen. And obviously, as you'll know, the MPPF allows for some market housing to be included to allow, to enable the delivery of affordable housing, but I think in reality, many of the sites that come forward that would have been rural exception in the future are likely to be exception to policy sites, so you've, some of those schemes, like the scheme at Bramley and things that have been given approval over the last couple of years. And then the final thing, which I think is important to talk about, is the future of housing associations. They have got, just as we have got a lot of challenges to address, they have a lot of challenges to address, and it's likely that they're going to increase the number of mergers. As I've said, two of the local, large housing associations are merging to make super-large housing associations. So again, their need for a local presence has gone, they don't have that passion to be in Waverley and to deliver for Waverley, they have a much broader agenda and an increased commercial focus. They're going to have to make more use of modern methods of construction, because that's going to deliver, make their money go further. And then some of the specialist housing associations, like I say, with English Rural, their specialism is rural housing, that's their core business, and that's going to be what they try and protect more than anything. And we need to strengthen our relationships with them, as they do with us, to find more creative ways of working. Now, the other slides are just for some, really for background information. and the, a slide about house prices, which really shows, you know, 12 times an average salary to be able to afford an entry-level property. It's challenging. So please carry on giving permission for those schemes with affordable housing, is my message. Any questions?
I just want to ask one question myself, and then I'll get on to... You say that the housing bill wants to restrict the amount of housing associations that have properties to let and increase the amount to right-to-buy, and yet you say at the same time that affordable housing should be at least 70% for rent. Can you explain the dichotomy between those?
Yes. So the dichotomy is that we've got a strategic housing market assessment that says the need in the borough is for rented accommodation. So we have a need for 70% rented and 30% alternative home, affordable home ownership options. But the government is saying to us, or is saying to housing providers, we want you to provide more home ownership. We want everybody to aspire to home ownership. And the difficulty that we have is, we know that we have got residents in the borough that will not be able to afford home ownership. They might aspire to it, but they're not in a position to be able to move into home ownership, particularly in a high-value area. So what we're going to try and have to do is to rely on private developers, the subsidy that they bring to a scheme being used to fund the rented accommodation, because the housing associations with their grant won't be able to do that. Housing associations themselves can still deliver rent, but they can't deliver rent through the grant-funded programme, and they can't use their recycle grant, which is a lot of money that they've had stored away for a rainy day, which is really frustrating. That is a particular frustration for them. Now, it doesn't mean to say that they might not challenge, and hopefully, we know, we might see a little bit of change, but the government is very clear, they're aspire, everyone should be aspiring for home ownership, and that's what they're trying to work towards. So that's where the struggle that you have as well.
councillor Coburn.
Yes, thank you, Jane. Jane, excuse me, Jim. Sorry. Close. Coburn Edwards, yes. What's it mean?
Councillor Coburn, I thought I had called your name.
Well, I put my light on, but Jim sort of let in. Right. Yeah, I've got what I was going to ask now. No, it's really about this, this question of one-bedroom houses or one-bedroom property, because combining all the aims that you have, and you and I, as you know, have exactly the same aim on having affordable property, whatever the property is looking exactly the same as everything else. I do not like the idea that they should be any different, and I can't see why they should be any smaller or any, anything about them should be different. When we went round Way Meadow Close, there's a one-bedroom property, and I asked the people that were showing us round, why have you put a one-bedroom property here? And they said, because Waverley told us to. And I said, well, what would you have built? And he said, two bedrooms. And this is really my question. Yes, you might, some people might need one-bedroom properties, but you can put one person in a small two-bedroom house. And if you do two-bedroom houses, the chances are that people are going to have small houses like they have on Way Meadow Close with lovely amenities, space, small garden, a place you can put your chair out, put the baby out in the pram and everything else. If you have these one-bedrooms, they end up in flats, because that's the economic way to do it. And I always have this problem with this, because, you know, in my sort of dreams, I see this utopia of these gorgeous houses for everybody, you know, so that nobody is, is sort of, or no, everyone has the same benefit, the same rights to a decent-sized house. So can you explain to me why we still ask for one-bedroom properties, which are minute when you go round them, which is why I raised it, and which, you know, could easily be two-bedroom, which gives so much more flexibility for different tenants in the, in the long run?
No, that, that's fine. And I do agree with that frustration. And certainly, a good few years ago, housing associations were moving towards, even though someone has a one-bed need, we're not going to build any more within our stock, we're only going to have two beds. But then we have universal credit and we have the underoccupation charge, and that immediately put pay to anybody, us being able to provide for a two, a single person living in a two-bed, because they're all automatically being disadvantaged. So I think actually, going back to Sentinel, that the housing association in that particular case, and I know they were one of those housing associations that tried to move away from one-beds altogether, they were, they will now be saying, actually, we're forced into that position of having to produce one beds, provide one beds, and that's why. Because actually, you're absolutely right, two beds give us much more flexibility. I would say, however, though, the space standards for one-beds are fairly generous, so it does give a little bit of flexibility, perhaps if they're well enough designed to be able to use them when your household grows, a little bit better than perhaps they may have done in the past, you know, not bed sits and those kinds of things, which perhaps we did build in a bygone time. So it's frustrating, but unfortunately, that's the reality of the world we live in.
Thank you, Jane. Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Jane, thank you for helping me to understand that very complex subject. Glad there's somebody who understands it. Rural exception sites, do we know if we've got any or how many we have got within Waverley?
Not, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head. We do every year a progress report on rural exception sites, which is on the website, and I think it gets, it certainly gets a mention in the development newsletter that goes out. And that gives us information about where they are located, which parishes have got rural exception schemes and which ones might be in the pipeline. As I say, I think currently, developers are taking a bit more of a bullish approach, and we might not see rural exceptions in the, in the relatively short term, because I think some of those sites may come forward as exception to policy. So that information, I can certainly send, send you the link to that report that we do every year. So that's...
Thank you. To a certain extent, you've answered what was going through my mind, and that was, what sort of incentives are there for developers to build the sort of houses we would want on the rural exception sites?
For developers, less so, but there are for the, the housing associations, because they've always been very, those that deliver rural exception are very passionate about rural exception houses. So it does rely on a landowner offering up land at a reduced amount, you know, at a reduced cost. And they're generally on sites that wouldn't get planning permission any other way, so actually, they're getting something that's slightly better than their agricultural value would be for that particular piece of land. But they're not getting what might be their hope value. And I think currently, in the current climate, developers or landowners will hold on thinking there's a hope value, because of the, what feels like a pressure to deliver more houses will mean they'll perhaps hold back and not bring sites forward for rural exception. But who knows? The market changes all the time. I don't know for sure.
Jane, councillor Woodson.
Thank you, Chairman. Jane, can I just, I just need a bit of clarification here. With the new Housing and Planning Bill coming through, right, it, it states that the, you put down on your presentation, stockholding authorities, which is Waverley in our case, to sell their high-value properties to enable the government to compensate housing associations, all right, for the, for the loss of grant. However, what determines a high-value property in Waverley, because they're all fairly high-value, I think?
Okay. Well, when the government consulted on this last year, they set regional high-value thresholds. So in, in Waverley, a significant proportion of our stock was high-value, because the thresholds for a one-bed was what, was £165,000, for a two-bed was £220, was something, those kinds of figures. So across the South East, there were some local authorities that had a very small proportion, but places like Waverley had a very high proportion. The likelihood is there'll be a levy set instead of us having to sell our high-value properties, but we'll still have to find some money from somewhere to fund, to, to pay that contribution to enable the extension to right-to-buy for housing associations to happen. We'll have to find the funding from somewhere. So that's...
Thank you, Jane. Are there any other questions? In which case, thank you very much. I know you. So, do you want to come back?
I ask one other question. With regard to current residents of Waverley property that rent, okay, where the parent passes on, okay, and there is a son, daughter, or whatever, or foster, foster child or something, living in the property, and it's a three-bedroom property, will they automatically be rehoused in a smaller property, or will they, what's the situation there? Because something's happened in my ward, and I'd like some information on that.
I think that's probably best for Hugh to answer, and perhaps out of this meeting, you know, to email him separately, and we'll get that up, if that's all right.
Right, thank you, Jane. So we now move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the review of the Waverley Meals on Wheels service. I'm just reading out here that the purpose of this report is to ask the community overview and scrutiny committee to consider the review of the current meal on wheels service delivered by the Royal Voluntary Service Hub, which is jointly funded by Waverley Borough Council and Surrey County Council, and part comments for a community meal service. Now, if you look in your budget papers, if anybody who's got it, you'll see that on page 74, £60,000 has been allocated for Meals on Wheels, of which half of it is provided by Surrey County Council and half is provided by Waverley. So if I can, having said that, if I can ask Jane Todd to address me. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. The council currently funds the Royal Voluntary Service Surrey Hub to deliver a community Meals on Wheels service to its residents through a comprehensive and detailed service-level agreement. And as the chairman mentioned, Waverley currently allocates funding of £30,000 towards this service, which is matched by Surrey County Council Adult Social Care, making a total of £60,000 for the year. This is a factual report, setting out what the current service looks like to councillors. This is the first time details about the service have been presented to councillors in some years, and therefore updates them on how the service operates and how it is delivered to, with our funding. It sets the scene to open discussions on the service that is delivered now, and for councillors to consider what a community meal service should look like in the future to meet the needs of our residents. The monitoring of this service actually sits outside of the normal process to fund and monitor the seven voluntary organisations that have three-year service-level agreements with the council, so organisations like Waverley Hopper, Community Transport and Citizens' Advice, and this is historical. This review therefore gives councillors the opportunity to be informed about the service and the outcomes delivered with Waverley's funding as part of our overall funding to the voluntary sector. In addition, the recently adopted Aging Well Strategy Action Plan identified an action to review the partnership with the RVS Meals on Wheels service in order to meet the changing needs of our older residents. The service is of greater benefit than just the meal itself. It provides vital social contact for some clients through the RVS Safe and Well Check, which is carried out for every client on delivery of their meal. Volunteers report any concerns they may have about clients, and clients can be signposted to other services if required, such as befriending schemes and information advice services. This existing annual service-level agreement with RVS is due to continue in 1617, and at this stage, this is the start of the review of the service, and RVS will continue delivering under the current model for 201617. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Jane. Are there any questions? Councillor Milley.
Thank you, Chairman. One of the, one of the questions I have about this is what is going to happen when they move the Gostrey Centre to the Memorial Hall? Because as far as I can see, there's not a suitable space in the kitchen for these to be utilised. And as it is, as it is at the moment, I know that they're struggling, because they have people making fresh meals, and that we are serving the whole of that whole of, Waverley with, with, with these, with heating up these meals. And I don't see any, any room for them to do that when, if they're moving it all to the Memorial Hall. Apart from anything else, that's one question, but the other thing I'd like to say is that although there's only a small amount of people, and they're saying that it's dropping off, I don't think, given that the, we were told yesterday that the aging population is growing exponentially in Waverley, I suggest there probably will be a bigger take-off in time, take-up in time. But also, I think, when I read that sort of 24% of those people don't see one person, one person in a week, otherwise they don't see anybody else, that people are often found by these people in dire situations, because nobody else is bothering to visit them, I think it's essential that we keep this, and it's essential on a humane level, that we have, you know, we, we do, we certainly do, and are prepared to keep this going. But I do think also that the food needs to be looked at, because I don't think it is very tasty. My, my neighbour had it, and it was simply foul, and I am a coach, well, I was a coach, I had my own business, I'm a cook, and I think it was pretty grim. I think something has to be done about that, especially as, when you're an old person or when you're a person living on your own, you really look forward to something like your, your meal. Your, your food is so, is so important. So I think that needs to be looked at. I think we should, on a humane level, think of funding this and, and helping it. And also, I'd like to know what is going to happen when it does go to the Memorial Hall, whether or not we could actually use the lower level of the Memorial Hall to have a, an area for them to heat this up properly. But having said that, you know, that sussed off six rounds for three hours, and it's pretty ghastly. And I think that should be, you know, you know, feeding somebody is like, oh, we fed the horse, but you know, you don't just feed it, you give it nice food, something to look forward to and something to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Milley. I think there might be something wrong with your microphone, certainly, perhaps you'd, anyway...
I think I overwhelm it.
No, all right. Katie Wood, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I mean, firstly, this is the very first part of the review. This is, say, a factual report about the current service and how it is operating now. That's not necessarily to say that it is the service that you may choose, or councillors may decide that they want to go forward. We're not saying not deliver a service, we're saying, let's look at this current model. And yes, and that has also been through the Aging Well Strategy, with a lot of feeding consultation we did, we got a lot of feedback about the meals and the quality, and that they weren't freshly made, and there's also, you know, a lot of other alternatives out there. But this review really is just at the moment bringing you the current model as it is, and the good parts about it and some of the negative parts about it. One of the opportunities for yourselves is to consider doing an in-depth review on the Meals on Wheels service, and then looking at, sort of putting some observations and some, you know, suggestions about any future service that you may think would be appropriate. We are working closely with the RVS. They have been part of the report, they supplied a lot of the information for us. So this, their operations manager, you know, is very open to looking at how to create a service that is fit for the older people of Waverley as we go forward. Whether it runs from the Gostrey Centre or whether it was to run from another area in Waverley, that can all be part of the review. I think what we don't want to do is actually put any barriers in place that stops developing an appropriate service for the clientele of Waverley that we have now and the aging population, and the kind of food they would like to see and the delivery. We do recognise how important the visit is, hence, we're making, you know, we're not making any recommendations, we're asking for your input, and to actually, let's look closely at this service. Is it right for this time? Do we want to change it moving forward? And it is the appropriate time, is probably...
Thank you, Katie. Councillor Woodson.
Thank you, Chairman. My wife used to help deliver the Meals on Wheels service, and the meals were atrocious, and everybody complained about them, but people liked the visit. The current service is not, is not fit for purpose. We need to look at a better model. And I know from the notes from the officers that the, they've requested a marketing plan, but they've not received anything. We need to drag this service into the 21st century, and we need to get on with it as soon as possible. We're just wasting money, and that is unacceptable. That's what I've got to say on the matter.
Thank you, councillor Woodson. Councillor...
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I agree with a lot of what's been said, I agree with councillor Milley's, I certainly agree with Katie. I too have been out on the rounds to, you know, see what this is like.
We're just wasting money and that is unacceptable. That's what I've got to say on the matter.
Thank you, Councillor Edwards. Councillor...
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, I agree with a lot of what's been said, I agree with Councillor Milley's, I certainly agree with Katie. I too have been out on the rounds to, you know, see what this is like several times, and I think some of these words are a bit harsh. I mean, people actually did enjoy what I delivered and I didn't cook it. You know, we've all got different tastes, but I think the important thing is what Katie said, we need an in-depth look at this. You know, it's not working for all sorts of different reasons and there seem to be better models elsewhere. So this is where we as a community O N S should be really doing an in-depth review, as you say, helping the officers and coming up with a scheme that really is good. But I must just stress, as everybody else has done, the meal is almost incidental with some of these people. We found people, you know, they're sitting in their chair, they were raised at six o'clock because that's when the carer called, they didn't see another person till we came in. We walked in the back door, which is permanently open because that's the only way anyone could access, the ladies in the wheelchair, out in the sticks. You know, this is a valuable service, it really is. And as I say, linking it with wellbeing and another form of the service, there's all sorts of ways we can take this forward. But I don't think we need to keep it, you know, we don't need to criticise every bit of what's going on at the moment. It needs improving, like most of us, you know, and I think we should have a look at it in depth.
Thank you, Councillor Rudd.
Thank you, Chair. I really want to add my voice to what has already been said. Some years ago, when my late wife organised a few rounds in Hasmer, I noticed over the years she did that, that they decreased almost halved over a few years, and that was before twenty eleven, when I see from these figures, they went down by a quarter again in the last three years. So it is sad, it's decreasing because it is a very valuable point of contact. I helped her do rounds occasionally in the winter and I too have had the experience of going into a home and being encouraged to touch the client, make sure they're still alive. It's pretty dire. And that's very important, as others have said. I noticed the comment here that some residents said they preferred to buy ready-made meals from local supermarkets. I can see that, and I was quite surprised, being pretty ignorant about just Meals on Wheels until I actually went on the rounds, that people pay for them. And it's not nothing, it's not that significant, but it's about the same as you could get a ready meal in Tesco's, possibly not Waitrose. So I agree, I think we should have an investigation as to what the best ways to proceed. It may not be as it is now, but we must keep the visits going.
Thank you, Councillor Nazir.
Hi. I think it's a very big job with delivering the food, which they did three years back when it was snowed on, and some of them even walked to the old people and delivered that. But I would think that if the survey is done for the food, what kind of food they are looking for and what budget they would like to pay the old people, I think every house which is getting Meals on Wheels would be better, and suggestions by the council committee as well. How could we improvise that?
I think that's quite a difficult one to answer, but we will discuss it. Right, Councillor Els.
Thank you, Chairman. So I absolutely agree that a review is needed. This is a multifaceted issue. We've got two hundred volunteers to consider, some of them are over eighty themselves, and they need to be considered as well because they've been giving up their time and you can't just drop people, so I don't think that's going to be likely. I think that the other issue is that it's costing us more than thirty thousand actually because we spent twenty thousand on kitchen maintenance and repairs, we spent three thousand on refuse collection, so actually it's cost us fifty-three thousand. I also think, absolutely agree with all my colleagues' comments about the importance of a visit, save from well checks, but that's another issue as well. So it's all got to be treated separately, I think, and every issue has to be looked at separately. One question I'd just like to ask. The survey that we have on pink paper here, it says it's the Farnham, the Farnham Meals on Wheels Customer Satisfaction Survey. Does the Farnham part of that simply refer to the fact that it's cooked in Farnham? It's a borough-wide survey. Borough-wide, okay, that's fine. So just one other thing, which makes me absolutely certain that we must have an in-depth review, is that we're told in this review that when the service is not used, by forty-eight per cent of those currently in receipt of them, they get their own meals. Now, that is another thing that I think needs deep investigation, because if they are capable of getting their own meals, why are we then going in? It's because of the visit, isn't it? So the whole thing has got to be taken, everything's got to be taken into consideration. I'm really happy and pleased to hear my colleagues supporting that view. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Councillor. It does seem to be that the general opinion is that we should have an in-depth review on this issue. Are we all agreed?
Agreed.
Excellent. Well, in that case, let's move on, decide how we're going to do that. I think probably writing a scoping report is the answer, and in that context, we need to form a subcommittee. I think my vice-chairman here, Councillor Els, is probably the best person to chair that subcommittee, she's an expert on the subject. But we need four other councillors to come and join in that subcommittee. Are there any volunteers? Councillor Nazir, Councillor Coburn, Councillor Patricia Els and Councillor Edwards. Thank you all very much.
Chairman, could you just confirm that I am only a substitute on this committee? Is it open to me?
You would be able to come along and observe, but as a substitute member, I don't believe that you can actually be a full member on that subcommittee, I'm afraid.
Thank you, Chairman. In that case, I think you need to find somebody else. Thank you.
Check the names, I've got Councillor Jenny Els and Councillor Indibil Nazir and Carol Coburn, oh, and Jim Edwards. Yeah, that's fine.
So we've got four?
That's five. That's fine.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, well, Emma will be no doubt circulating details of the first meeting of that subcommittee. Right, now moving on to item nine, the Natural England Review of the Effectiveness of Suitable Alternative Green Space, in other words, Sang. As I explained to Councillor Milley's earlier on, the Joint Basin Review, what it's called now, aren't able to come and discuss this with us, but I think Graham Parrott will give us an update on where we stand as far as Sang is concerned.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. I think this report was brought to the committee because I think you wanted a bit of an update on where we were with or where the Joint Strategic Partnership Board are with this piece of work. The short answer is, I think, that they have received an interim report, which they're not happy with at the moment. That's hence the reason why they feel more work needs to be done on that report, and so it's not been published yet. I know the Joint Strategic Partnership Board normally meets, I think, twice a year, so I haven't myself got a specific timetable for when they'll report back on it, but obviously their next meeting, scheduled meeting, would be in six months' time. I think they may be meeting earlier than that for other reasons, but at this point in time, I can't give any more information on when they will finally be in a position to publish the report. I only have really the sort of limited knowledge of the background, as I wasn't at the Joint Strategic Partnership Board meeting when this was discussed, but they clearly, as a group, and that group incidentally includes representatives from all the local authorities who are affected by this, as well as key organisations, so Natural England, the RSPB, Surrey Wildlife Trust are all part of that group, and their collective decision was that the report isn't currently, in their view, fit for purpose, so it's not being published.
I think you will agree, that's a fairly unsatisfactory state of affairs. This is a vital part of the local plan and it's essential that we understand where Sang is and where we're getting early prompts. So I think we need to go back to the Thames Basin Health Joint and make sure that they can comply with our request that they address this committee with some form of an answer. Councillor Coburn.
I think you're confusing two issues here, Chairman. I mean, the report is about the efficacy of Sangs, isn't it? That's what that report's about. And until they report, we have to wait and see what they come up with. In the meantime, we are constrained by the fact that we have to provide Sangs. They're not the same thing, you know, until anything else changes, we have to provide Sangs, but that's not what this report was about. This report was about whether Sangs were working, it was a totally different issue.
Yeah, I understand, yeah, thank you. Councillor Milley.
The point about it surely is that if we have no report again, how are we going to continue offering Sang and developing sites without satisfying the legal constraints that's referred to in the M P P F, which says, the European Court of Justice ruled that a plan or project may be authorised only if a competent authority has made certain that the plan or project will not adversely affect the integrity of the site. That is the case where no reasonable scientific doubt remains as to the absence of such effects. National authorities must be convinced that there will not be an adverse effect, and where doubt remains as to the absence of adverse effects, the plan or project must not be authorised. So I don't know, we observe the law and allow only limited development, we can quickly create a local plan with much lower housing numbers, and because of the numbers already built, we'd exceed our five-year supply and would have instant protection for the whole borough. We'd also have the basis for a lawful local plan, which the government could not overrule, and we'd have time to perfect our approach to the other major issues such as flooding, transport and Dunfall, to ensure that local plan is entirely sound. The point is surely, which I'm trying to say, is that Sang can only work if we have the evidence to say that it is, that we can develop things if it's actually, you know, making the Sang recommendation actually works in that way. Sorry, that sounds very confused, sorry, but what I'm trying to say is that you can't develop things within the law unless you abide by the law, which says that you have to have that evidence in place. And I can't understand why this keeps on going on and on and on. It, well, you know, you're going to say another six months, it's going to be another six months. It's just, it's not lawful, surely. I'm sorry, I just...
I think there's a couple of things perhaps I need to explain again about the process we go through. The first thing is that Natural England are a key organisation, they're the national body, they're the ones who are charged with making sure that we're doing the right thing essentially. I know we're deemed to be the competent authority legally, but nonetheless, we have to be guided by Natural England. We're also one of, is it, I think, twelve other local authorities, certainly a considerable number of other local authorities facing the same challenge and the same issues, who've also had to go through processes with local plans and so on, and have had those found to be sound with the strategy that they're following. Natural England are not saying to us or any of the other local authorities affected by this, hang on a minute, you should stop, there's a problem here, we can't miss anything else until this is resolved. They obviously feel that the three-pronged approach which we've got, which is around Sang provision, access management and monitoring of the SPAs themselves, is the best fit at the moment. Clearly, they need to keep that under review and that's part of what this monitoring is about. The other thing I would say is that when we pull a local plan together and submit it for examination, not only will we want to make sure that Natural England are happy with it, it'll also be subject to what we call a habitats regulations assessment, which we've done before, where we look at the specific issues around the plan and its effect, and we get specialists to look at it. And I think with those, given what's happened before, we would find it very, very difficult if Waverley tried to put forward a plan where it said it didn't feel it was satisfactory to carry on with the Sang approach, when Natural England and the other authorities affected by it are all still accepting that as an appropriate way forward.
Thank you, Councillor Edwards.
I think, Graham, what would be, I kind of agree with other councillors of what they've already expressed, because this particular item is about the effectiveness and how it works of the Sang, okay? Now, what I would like from Graham, I think he needs to be the contact officer on this, not Matthew Evans, because Matthew's no, has his notice in whatever, so Graham should be the point of contact, the contact officer, I think, and he's done more work on this than anybody else. But what I'd like to see from Graham is a step-by-step, okay, explanation of what exactly his answer is to the previous councillor's question, because it appears to me, it looks like the government wants to have its cake and eat it, and the EU are demanding one thing, the government wants another thing, and we're pig in the middle here, and, you know, if we haven't got Sang, we can't build the houses. That's what it means, as far as I can see, but you've explained something different to me, and, you know, this is crazy. We need to understand exactly who's in the right, who's in the wrong, and where are we going from here? Because it's bloody confusing part of the language.
Chairman, would it help, because I think I want to avoid confusion over the issue of this question of whether Sang works and about the delivery of Sang. It is Waverley's responsibility in putting forward its local plan to make sure that if the development is going to take place within the area affected by the Thames Basin Heath S P A, that the avoidance strategy is followed, i.e. that there is Sang provided. That's our responsibility and part of the, a key part of the work we're doing at the moment in putting the local plan together is to consider short and long-term opportunities for Sang, and we will not be able to put forward to an inspector a housing number if we can't give an inspector an indication that we believe we can deliver the Sang needed to support. That's our role. The issue about, the wider issue about Sang as a strategy generally, I think, is something that is not something for us at Waverley to be trying to resolve ourselves. That's why we have Natural England, that's why the Joint Strategic Partnership Board was set up in the first place, and that's why there are a number of other authorities dealing with the same issue. And as I've said already, and until such time, I think, as Natural England starts saying to us all, you can't follow this approach for whatever reason, we have to be guided by them, and that is, we continue with the approach we have. And so the efforts of my team are going into looking at the Sang provision in Waverley to make sure we have the Sang we need to support whatever number is put forward in Farnham as part of the local plan.
Thank you. I think you wanted to add something to that, Councillor Coburn, did you?
No, I was just frustrated that people are sort of conflating the two issues and they're totally separate issues. There's a UK law which came into being as a result of the habitats directive, and we have got a way, working with Natural England, to deliver our responsibilities under that law, it's as simple as that. And this is a total different issue, and, you know, I suppose people who live with Sangs all day long sort of understand it, and I can understand why it's difficult for people on the other side of the borough don't have to think about this thing, but it is a difficult issue. But this is totally separate from the local plan, you know. At the moment, we have to obey the law as it stands and the guidance that was in the South East Plan, which was carried forward into N R M six. I mean, you know, we don't have, as Graham's just said, we don't have any choice on this. While we're making planning decisions, we have to obey the law as it stands at the moment. If the law changes, we change, but we can't unilaterally say, well, we don't actually believe it's working, so we won't obey the law. It doesn't make any sense. So the two things are not one and the same. It's my frustration that you started off by linking this to the local plan. This is not really linked to the local plan at all. The provision of Sangs, which Graham's just said is mentioned, and I get so frustrated that we're putting out numbers for Farnham and we haven't got Sang to deliver them. I mean, that's my frustration. But I mean, this is a separate issue, we will get a report at some point. If it changes the whole thing, then Waverley has to change the way it makes planning decisions. But at the moment, we're constrained by, as I say, the UK law, which is delivered through the local policy. It's as simple as that.
Yes, thank you. I think it is a unsatisfactory state of affairs, I think you'll agree. Anyway, are members content to note the report on the current position in regard to the availability of Sang and the status of the interim review of the Sang being undertaken by Natural England on behalf of the Thames Basin Health Heath Joint Strategic Partnership? Are we in agreement?
Can we ask for Graham to be the contact officer now? Would that be appropriate?
Graham, are you happy to be the officer? Yes, we will add that. We can put it forward as a recommendation to the executive, yeah? Thank you. Right, are we in agreement with the statement I just made? Yeah, agreed, good. Right, thank you. Let's move on then to item ten. And I'd like to ask Katie Webb to introduce the report. I'd like to remind members... I'd like to remind members that any comments on Hazelmead Museum, we will take first, in which case I would ask Councillor Rand if he would please leave the room. So Katie Webb.
Yes. Chairman, do I leave the room now or after the report?
No, no, listen to what Katie Webb has to say, but if we are discussing Hazelmead Museum, I'm afraid I must ask you to leave.
Yes, of course, I understand that, of course. But presumably if no one wants to say anything about Hazelmead Museum, then I needn't leave. Would I be allowed to make a statement?
The advice, the advice from the monitoring officer is, is no, that you shouldn't.
No statements at all?
No.
Okay, thank you. Of a general nature, I mean.
Of a general nature, on other applications, yes, that's fine. You can stay for debate on other applications, but anything in relation to Hazelmead Museum, the monitoring officer has advised that you shouldn't.
I understand that. I want to make a general observation on voluntary help.
Yeah, you can come, as soon as, if there is any discussion on Hazelmead Museum, you're welcome to stay, then come back for other comments and discussion on anything else in relation to that item.
Thank you.
Katie, if I could ask you to start.
Good evening again. The purpose of this report is to ask the community overview and scrutiny committee to consider the applications to the Waverley Community Grant Scheme for the revenue funding of 2016 and 17. Oops, sorry, I put the wrong part here. The council's overall financial package to the voluntary sector is £744,530, showing the council's continued commitment to its partnerships with the voluntary organisation. This overall budget has been maintained over the past four years despite the council's significant reductions in its government grant. As a proportion of the council's overall net budget spend, the level of financial support has increased. Out of the £744,000, £158,650 makes up for the Waverley Community Grant Scheme. This year, we had a total of 23 applications to the scheme, and seven of those were new applications. The total level of funding requested by the organisations was £275,050. These requests far exceeded the funding pot and the overall budget by £116,400, which hopefully will sort of put in perspective for yourselves, obviously, the difficult decisions that both the Grants Panel and the Community ONS Committee had to make. The Grants Panel met on the 4th of December, and the Subcommittee met on the 9th of December. Both have recognised the need to prioritise funding on those activities that best meet a local need, and recognise those organisations that achieve meaningful outcomes for residents, particularly old people and vulnerable families. I think this has been one of our most challenging years for the councillors to make decisions in relation to the grant funding, and if you could give your observations and comments for executive, we'd be grateful.
Right, thank you. I'll take Hazelmead Museum first. Is there any, do you want to speak, Councillor Edwards, on that? Councillor Coburn.
Excuse me, Chairman. I mean, we haven't really decided whether we're just going to endorse the whole lot anyway. I mean, we might not need to go through them one by one. Got to establish whether we want to, really, haven't you? Because it's going to be a heck of a long night if we do want to do that.
Okay, in that case, I will ask if there are any questions on the general recommendation, which is...
From the Subcommittee. Any further comments than those received by the Subcommittee? Annex three.
Right, sorry. On the voluntary sector organisation funding, is there anything that anybody wants to suggest that will go up on the screen here that could go to the executive? Councillor Forrowski.
Chairman, I believe I had a comment that's not related to that. It was related to the content of the report, item 7 on page 53.
On page 53, Rowleys. Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman. I wanted to endorse what Councillor Coburn said, that I didn't think we had to go through each application individually, because we've all had our papers for quite some time, and I'm sure we've studied them and have come up with our own individual concerns or congratulations. Can I just first start by saying that I think it's excellent that Waverley continues to support our voluntary sectors. It's an essential part of our community, and without that, I don't know what we'd do. And it's always regrettable when we see reductions or when criterias can't be met for whatever reason. I'm deeply concerned, however, about Rowley Centre, and it's all written there in front of you about ring-fencing this amount of money, based in on the fact that last year we granted a 16% increase, and this year we're ring-fencing it. I know that's not to say that it's not going to get it, but how did we end up in a situation that we are now ring-fencing this money until further information is required? Or could it just be made very clear in simple terms what it is we need to do to make sure and have confidence that Rowleys will get the full allocation of their grant? Thank you, Chairman.
Would you like to abbreviate that in one basic comment we can forward to the executive?
I would like confidence. Oh.
Last year, in the executive, well, Community ONS observed to executive, and it was a recommendation, that in order for us to release the funding that was ring-fenced for Rowleys last year, that we were able to see a cash flow forecast that showed the costs that were directly for Rowleys and those that were apportioned to the Age UK services, because we had concerns over a significantly large back office cost and some supporting salary costs. We've worked closely, or tried very hard to work closely all year with Rowleys, and it's taken a lot of patience and a lot of meetings for us to be able to understand the cash flow and apportion costs. And although we are getting there, there is still some way to go. So we have been able to release the majority of the grant this year. We've still got some further questions that we want just to clarify on for the last quarter. And we do hope that we won't envisage, you know, having these problems that we've had this last financial year this year, but I think we need to still have that caveat in place so that we can ensure that all the money that we've ring-fenced for Rowleys goes to Rowleys and doesn't go to Age UK to help with the covering the cost of their other services. So it's just to ensure that money does go to Rowley Centre.
Want to come back?
Thank you, Chairman, if I may. Absolutely. I mean, it's a scenario, isn't it? Damned if you do, damned if you don't here, so it's going to be very, very difficult. It is very, very frustrating, though, to find out that a year on, we're still experiencing problems with dissecting these accounts. And I'm not sure, if you, the worry I have is that when we look at Rowleys and we look at the work that they do, it's excellent, it really is, and, you know, there'll be people in Cranley worried that that service may not continue, but not understand any other implications which may, you know, have resulted in the ring-fencing of it. And I think that's where I'm coming from, is because sitting around this table, we might have an understanding of it, but our public won't, and our residents and the people who go to Rowley's Daycare Centre, they won't have an understanding, but yet we could be causing them concern because they may feel that the money's not going to get to them. And that's where, all I'm saying here is I would like the assurance, and I think I've got it, is that going forward, they will get their grant, and the Rowley's Daycare Centre will continue to function. Thank you, Chairman, for allowing me to come back.
Right, thank you. I think Councillor Ellis has a point to make.
Well, I might be able to say this, whereas an officer might not be able to say it. So, you know, the reason it's taken such a long time is because Rowleys and UK Waverley were so enmeshed, it really was very, very difficult to separate the two and to unpick all the details. And the officers had a dreadful job to try and ascertain which way the money was going. It was very, very difficult to sort it all out. The officer, officers obviously aren't probably going to say that in quite that way, but I witnessed how very difficult it was. So that's why it's taken such a long time. But I do have confidence myself that Rowleys is now protected. I don't have any concerns about that myself from what I've seen and heard. I'm not observed now for Rowley's UK Waverley, but I was. So I do have confidence, so I think you can be assured. And I think, if I may, Chairman.
Councillor, I know you've been involved in Rowley, so would you like to comment on it?
Thank you, Chairman. Unfortunately, over the years, there has been a continuing understanding that Rowley's is either closed or that Waverley Borough Council plans to close Rowley's. This has been an ongoing problem, and we have sought with the support of the officers at Waverley endlessly to give people the confidence to know that Waverley Borough Council supports Rowley's and that there is no reason for the centre to be closed. So I would like to thank the officers at Waverley at this stage for their endless and for their continuing support and encouragement during a very, very difficult situation that has been going on for a number of years. I've been involved, if you like, with both of the organisations for almost 20 years, so that I have an understanding of the situation, how it developed, and how the support from the officers has been absolutely brilliant during this difficult time. Rowley's is thriving, and hopefully it will go from strength to strength, and will continue to support some very vulnerable people who use the centre, but also elderly people who go there to meet other people, to have a good meal, and to take part in a number of classes, exercises, have entertainment, have holidays. It's a wonderful centre, and it deserves our support, and I'm very grateful to the officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. I think we also all appreciate the amount of effort that you've put into Rowley's over the last 20 years, and it has turned around, and it is a very successful centre. Councillor Brandon.
Thank you, Jim. The Subcommittee did give great deal of thought and concern to Rowley Centre, and I think it would be fair to say, without actually reiterating what my wife has already said, we have, over the years, as Ward Members, sought to reassure any number of people, whether they are members of Rowley's or not, Waverley will not allow it to close. And indeed, in that respect, knowing that Waverley will not allow it to close, my wife and I have actually become members. Thank you.
Can I just ask, Chairman, who's the rep on the, at Rowley's? Do we have a WVC rep there? It is Pat, okay, thanks.
Councillor Rand.
Thank you, Chairman. May I make a brief general statement without particular reference to any institution? And that is this, that many of these institutions are supported by volunteers, and we welcome their involvement, and particularly in raising funds. And I just want us to be aware that if grants for any particular organisation are significantly reduced or eliminated, it doesn't send a very good PR message to the volunteers. It's a perfectly natural reaction to realise that if people are working hard to raise funds for an organisation, then Waverley says, "Well, you've been so good at that, we're not going to give you anything at all." Doesn't go down very well. You wonder why one bothers to raise the funds in the first place. That's all I wanted to say.
Councillor Rand. Right, I think that concludes it. Any other points that people want to make? Right, everyone, do you want to put this point up on the screen? Well done, that was quick. All agreed? The next one is Age UK. Sorry, any comments on that one?
I think we finished that item now.
We have, we have completely finished. Okay, okay, right. Okay, well, in that case, we've concluded item 10. We move on to item number 11, the draft health and wellbeing strategy for 2016 to 2021. And I'd like to ask Katie Webb to introduce that report, please.
Sorry, actually, Linda Butler, our Health and Wellbeing Officer, is going to introduce the report.
Thank you, yes. Senator Port aims to set out the new health and wellbeing strategy. And I'd actually first like to introduce a film related to that report, which actually shows some of the health and wellbeing-related services and projects that support the health and wellbeing of residents, and actually featuring the action plan of the health and wellbeing strategy. So in a sense, this is actually what some of the themes and the actions of the strategy look like in real life, as it were. So these are already existing projects. Through the health and wellbeing strategy, we want to continue to develop activities like these so that residents of all ages are supported to be happy and healthy. So if we can, we'll show the film.
Just to confirm then, so this is just eight minutes long, and it just highlights some of the activities that are taking place within the borough, funded by the council or undertaken by council officers. And we very much hope that you enjoy it, because I think it highlights many of the themes we've been talking about today, particularly around volunteers and ageing population, the importance of maintaining people's social networks as they become older, and supporting the most vulnerable people in our community. So, here we go. Not picking up any sound at the moment, so I might need to revert back to this. Is that right?
Penny Naylor, and I am the coordinator for the Friends and Sea Project, funded by Waverley Borough Council, and coordinated from the offices of Busbridge and Hambledon Church. And today, we are currently riding along the Watercrest Line in Hampshire. We have brought a group of 35 older people with us, and it's a trip that we're offering as a summer holiday activity. And there's lots of chatter going on amongst the friendship groups of our members, and we're looking forward to getting to the end of the line and having a pub lunch all together.
What hometown has meant for me is that I keep in close touch with all my friends, and I think it's very important that an older person has a sense of belonging and are regarded. And this is a wonderful way of doing it, not only with the outings, with the talks, with the different things that go on. And I think it is tremendously important.
Thank you for loving me, that's what this is.
My name's Helena Bell from Pursued by a Bear. We've just finished the archive land and sea after a month's long workshop with Chestnut View Care Home and the Alzheimer's Society here in Hazelmead. I've been working with Nasa Muti, a writer, and Catherine Iton, a singer, and we've been coming in and doing workshops with the participants from two centres, and we've been hearing what their thoughts were about landscapes, gardens, seaside, recipes, and from all those words, Nasa has constructed four songs, which Catherine has then composed. And from all those words, Nasa has constructed four songs which Catherine has then composed music to.
But I do love this.
There is that sense of community and that sense of family. I think a lot of people, when they reach that age of their life, it's not just their immediate family, but it's the care people, it's the other people that they live with in the home, family is extended.
My name's Iris Ellis, I'm a community development worker within Waverley Borough Council. Part of my role was to come out to meet Mrs Warner because she needed some disabled adoptions in her home and she mentioned that she had some property issues and she had some problems with her garden. So we can either get probation service to come in and do a full clear or we can get Waverley Training Service to come in to make the garden into a proper garden again. And it's not just a one-off then, it carries on until the garden is made to the garden that Mrs Warner can either work on on her own or we can do a follow-up and keep the garden coverage ground going for her.
We perform day-to-day maintenance, weeding, pruning, sometimes lawn mowing, tidying up and planting. What we're doing here today is we've done some weeding, we've been previously, we've weeded the garden, we've tidied up around the edges, pruning the hedges.
I'm Janet Ward, I've been here nearly four years. It was winter when I moved in, the whole garden was full of stones, it was a nightmare. And lads are fantastic, they're polite, they work well, and they're just a dream.
Today, we've got a programme called The Golden Years. So we have a lot of people coming from different care homes, different centres for older people and a lot of volunteers as well coming in. We've got art staff, we've got a lot of dancing, a lot of different, different things that just remind people of yesterday and so it's going to be an exciting day today for a lot of people.
My name's Tessa, I'm the Easy Move Officer at Waverley Borough Council and I help older and vulnerable council tenants to downsize. Alan and I met just before Christmas last year. He phoned up and said that he'd seen one of our adverts in the Making Waves publication and felt that he needed some easy move support in order to downsize and asked if I could go and visit him.
I've been wanting to move for a couple of years from my three-bedded house, which was getting too much for me, and a large end of terrace garden. So part of me wanted to move and part of me didn't.
And Alan and I quickly established that, actually, there was a lot of support that the Easy Move scheme could provide him. And in fact, although Alan's extremely capable, he lacked possibly the courage to make that first step and just wanted a bit of support getting over that first barrier.
You've got to arrange utility bills and all that sort of thing. But she came with a sheet of paper a mile long and some of the things I hadn't even thought about and I could tick them off and I thought that was brilliant, you know, because she was so helpful.
Over the period that Alan and I have been working together, we've built up a good working relationship and since Alan's moved into his new home, I've watched him flourish really, which has been absolutely lovely.
And Tessa's been round to see how I got the flat and we've had tea. And as I say, I couldn't have wished for a better person to have helped me move.
My name's Lorraine Yates and I'm the Welcome to Volunteering Coordinator for Waverley. People are referred to me from a number of organisations and I work one-to-one with them to find appropriate volunteering opportunities in order that they can reduce their social isolation, improve their skills, make friends and generally improve their wellbeing. We've brought a group of volunteers to Bramley and we've been clearing an area of brush land to get it ready for when they open the gardens to the public.
You get to learn a whole array of things because it's good therapy for me. I can take all the skills I have to it and then build upon them and learn a whole lot more skills.
So I'm just starting to get back into work. So it's like a stepping stone just to get myself steady at first and then I can do paid work once I get some experience.
Yeah, I really enjoyed it. It gave me a good experience and I met really nice people, they're really friendly.
To me, care or the concept of care is being compassionate, being patient, being a good listener, being a good communicator, just being there for someone who needs you, who's not able to do certain things that they were able to do before.
The care is somebody just to say, oh yes, I can help you or I'll give you some advice. Well, that is it. I mean, we need always had somebody to rely on. I need always somebody to rely on.
Oh Mary, this London's a wonderful sight with the people all working by day and by night. They don't sell potatoes, nor barley, nor wheat, but there's gangs of them digging for...
Hope you don't mind me discussing short the soundtrack.
Thank you. If I could just say a few more words about the health and wellbeing strategy. I hope what that film showed is that much of the work that is already going on is already affecting the health and wellbeing of people living here. And what the health and wellbeing strategy aims to do is really highlight that work and really make the case for the fact that we are already doing lots of great work to impact people's health and wellbeing. It's hoped that in the future, by showing this kind of proven track, kind of, you know, record of being able to deliver health and wellbeing projects, that might in future open up funding opportunities to do more things to impact people's health and wellbeing. But mostly, the strategy will ensure that Waverley continues to have some of the best health outcomes in the country. So what we hope is that you'll pass any observations to the executive on the health and wellbeing strategy. Thanks.
Thank you very much for an excellent film and I think we all appreciate that this isn't, health and wellbeing isn't just for the older people but also for children and young people as well. And I think you've put forward a fantastic team together and you're doing a fantastic job. Any comments at Councillor Coburn?
Thank you, Chairman. I mean, who would say a word against what we've just seen? It's absolutely terrific. But it is projects and people live 365 days a year and I'm always disappointed that there's nothing about what we're doing through the planning system to increase people's health and wellbeing. Sorry to raise it again, I raised it last night, air quality, but that is a huge issue in our town and it affects the health of the very young and the very old disproportionately. And, you know, we don't seem to put in, or maybe I'm wrong, maybe there is something, I just haven't read it, about when we're designing or thinking warehouses going, we're doing the local plan at the moment, we look at green space, we look at exercise, look at leisure. I don't think we should see any of these as separate issues because to me, they're one and the same thing. You get up in the morning and, you know, you go right through the day and the following day, the following day. So everyday life should be healthy as well as what you do on special projects, is what I'm basically saying. So anything we can add through the planning system that benefits people on a daily basis, whether it's definitely stating that people must have access to green space, which they should do anyway, but also just the way we design things and certainly looking into transport issues with air quality. I think all of these things we should be doing as well as the excellent work you're doing with projects.
Thank you. Emma's made a note of your comment and it will be noted. Is anybody else who wishes?
Chairman, just to endorse those comments, I think it's very important with something like health and wellbeing, not to see it as just short-term projects. The real success is when this is mainstreamed in the council's core activities, from the way we do planning to the way we operate our environmental health services, to the way that we fund the voluntary sector and the way that we operate as an organisation more widely.
Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. The recommendation is very bland that the committee notes the report. Could we perhaps add in there and applaud some words like applause what is being done?
Councillor Els.
Thank you and I enjoyed watching that film, thank you very much. It was very interesting to see everything that's going on and I think that perhaps all the councillors ought to see that film at some stage because I'm sure there's stuff happening that everybody's not aware of. And I also endorse Councillor Coburn's remark that we must do even more. But of course, we need to get the whip out, don't we really? Because you're all working quite hard already, I know. Just one comment and it does seem to be a good strategy overall, but I was a bit concerned because your mental health number... What number was that? Had it just here. Now I've lost it again. Promote emotional wellbeing and mental health. On page 99, your shared vision. Now, I think you've met up to a point, develop a preventative approach, number one, and number three, and number four, and number five. But number two, I'm not convinced that you have. And I would just like to point out that as far as I can see, the mental health, raise awareness and tackle stigma and discrimination, you're only really, unless you can tell me somewhere else, because I have read this fairly thoroughly and I might have missed something, you're dealing with dementia. You're not actually dealing with mental health as such and there are so many problems that people have. So if you can tell me that you are, that would be really good. But on your charts, it's all about dementia. Tackling stigma and discrimination on page 115 is really only dealing with dementia. It looks like that to me anyway.
Actually, many of the activities cut across all kinds of mental health issues and actually what we wouldn't want to do is actually just sort of put, you know, this activity is only for people with mental health. Often, many activities encompass a number of different people and their own personal challenges that we cater for. We've picked out particularly relevant dementia projects because they're very different to obviously people who have just general health, mental issues. So we wouldn't want to conflict the two. But yeah, the report covers, the action plan would cover anybody with mental health issues unless it's sort of separated to a dementia, memory loss type activity.
If I could just add, so an example of that would be that many of our frontline staff come across people with quite complex needs, including complex mental health needs. And so making sure those staff are equipped with good quality training that enables them to know how best to respond, how best to refer in terms of where they need expert help is really important. And we're in the process of rolling out training to a number of frontline staff who face particular numbers of people with mental health issues as part of their day-to-day work.
Thank you, Chairman, for letting me come back. I'm sure that that is what is happening, but I'm not sure where it's shown in this report. That was really my point. Thank you.
I think this mental health question is quite a serious question to consider. I mean, the figures on, or the comments on top of page 93 regarding Godleming, Central Knockford Ridge and also Farnhamor Park are rather alarming. So nevertheless, we should certainly do... Councillor Murley.
Can I just ask, do you do anything with diet and cooking? Because you have a lot about running, doing trails and things like that and we know that obesity, given the report here, is pretty bad in our borough. And I am very concerned that very few people seem to know about what is good and what isn't good for them. And I myself had a lady who was working for me who had bipolar and she was unable to hang on to any information I gave her. She came into work to help with my horses. She had actually been left on a form of medication which she should have been off after 10 weeks. She'd been on it for 10 years and was incapable then of actually holding enough information to say to the doctor, this is not doing me any good. When I realised that she couldn't do that, she couldn't do that, I did write to the doctor and we got her medication sorted out gradually. But what she didn't understand about, and one of her main problems, was her diet was so terrible. She had very little money, but I was able to teach her three very good meals that she cooked very easily and was cheap. Do you do anything like that? It really did turn her around. She didn't have these awful dips and, you know, I mean, the weight came off her and it wasn't through doing masses of exercise, it was because she was eating stuff that was good for her and she was bringing up children, so they're, you know, it was important that their organs, their brains were giving the right food and nourishment. And I don't think enough of that is done and I wonder if you are doing that with people. Thank you.
Page 105 of the document, under the theme Encouraging Healthy Lifestyles, Action 1.1.3 is supporting places for people, so our leisure provider, with their tier-two weight management service, which does include advice for people on how to eat healthily and lose weight. And that is a free service currently running with funding from Public Health, who is another one of our partners. We're keen to, you know, support both of those partners in the development of more services because you're right, there are a large proportion, 60% of people are either overweight or obese. So it is a huge, you know, issue and we're very keen to support the development of those sort of services.
But it's not just advice people need, they need to have it demonstrated. You need to show people what they can cook and how they can cook it. That's very important, I think.
That tier-two weight management service is a 12-week course which gives people the skills on how to choose healthy foods, how to pick from menus, how to, you know, make simple, healthy recipes. So we're really pleased that that service is being provided in Waverley at the moment.
Just maybe another example, we have, I think it has reported in here a number of occasions, a family support team who work with families with complex needs, often with young children who aren't getting enough nourishment, who, with their habits at home, aren't proving very effective. And our staff go in, sometimes on a daily basis, to make sure that children get up, make sure they have proper breakfast and proper meals together as a family and that the food is nutritious and is sourced from the right places. And it's very practical help so that when the family support staff walk away, the family are able to sustain those positive habits going forward. I don't think it's enough, I think there is a greater need than we're able to meet, but it is something that I think we will want to see more progress with as time goes on.
I think also that fuel poverty and living in cold and damp is also a vital tantrum. Is there... Right, Councillor Lee.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Murley's example was very important in one particular respect and that was that this particular lady was coming to her because she was employed by her. Can I just ask, of all the groups of officers that are in contact with various peoples out there, whether there's a, say, a recognition of this particular person isn't eating particularly well and therefore directing them to the sources of tier-two weight management service? It's just sort of getting referrals because otherwise that's in one location and what is stimulating the people to go there and is everybody being picked up that could be picked up?
So we've got a few actually examples of those kind of services where people might be, you know, sort of spotted on routine visits or that kind of thing. There is the Floating Support Service, which works with people on a kind of one-to-one basis and helps them to access a whole range of services based on their needs. So that could be directing them to advice on how to eat healthily or, you know, take physical activity or it might be directing them to support with how to downsize their home or, you know, financial advice or any kind of help. So there are those services there to kind of guide people in the right direction to help them to make those healthy and, you know, wellbeing decisions. Another example is the Farnham Making Connections Service, which again, we, you know, support and have developed with our partners to do a kind of similar thing, to support people to make these healthy, you know, lifestyle choices.
Thank you, chairman. I will be very brief. I think the report and the video demonstrates beautifully just how complex the whole situation is and it's not just one approach or one glove fits all. There's so many things that, and there's so many agencies involved that can help with the education and the wellbeing. I thought your report was excellent, I really did. I mean, I wouldn't say I was sceptical some time ago when we started to enter into this, but I thought it would be easy to see how we could miss so much vital information. So I think what you've done so far is really, really good. We've got a long way to go and there's a lot more to done, but I think to get to where you are now, you need to be highly commended for. I too picked up on the mental health issue because mental health is such a complex and such a very difficult subject to approach and it's very misunderstood and people who suffer with mental health issues aren't always forthcoming because of the nature of the illness. We talk about 60% in quotes here, there and everywhere. But, you know, we've got this wonderful campaign through the media at the moment which is talking about public health and the figure's quoted, one in four, all of us at some point in our life will have some problem with mental health. So I think when we look at that and we look in the workplace as well as outside the workplace, it is a much bigger issue, but I commend you for what you've done. I think it's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Forrester. I would draw your attention to paragraph four on page 97, which expressly deals with the mental health problems in Waverley and it is a serious issue and I think of vital importance, if we may. Right, I think Emma is now going to put on the screen the comments that you'd like to make. I all agree with those observations. Any... Paragraph one, the last sentence. Am I being prickly? Say it again. The last sentence of paragraph one, I don't... That is what. It's a very small point. It was. As I said, it's really pedantic.
Those are comments for the minutes which will be expanded on. They're just sort of general points, I've got to write them down. And the observations that will go forward to the executive are these two. But these will be expanded with the responses, what you receive from the officers.
You all agreed? Excellent. Right, you'll be glad to hear we nearly come to the end of this meeting this evening. The final item is item number 12, the review of the overview and scrutiny terms of preference and arrangements. And I'll ask my vice-chairman, who is on that committee, to make a few comments.
Thank you, chairman. I'm not going to say anything very much here because there's not very much to say. There has been a survey and we have had something like 27... 31? 21, not very many. A survey's back and they're being processed and we've got a meeting on Thursday morning and we will be discussing where to go from there with the results of the survey. And so I think the next meeting, it'll be brought to this committee in March, I think. So councillor Forrochewski, may I?
I promise I'm going to be so brief. I actually think it was an excellent idea, really, really good. I think it was a great job to have that review and I just hope when all the information is collated and it's put before the executive, they listen to it. Thank you.
And so say all of us. Thank you very much. Got one final comment.
Do you know councillor Pat Frost? So that should answer your question.
Right, there are no other matters discussed with this, except therefore I close the meeting. Thank you all very much and have a safe journey home.